I would like to call attention to a constituent whose birthday is tonight or was actually the twentieth, a couple of days ago. But I need to call attention to this because I think everyone should know that he's fifty-two years old because he was kind enough several weeks ago to point out my age and so I know that he would want everyone to know exactly how old he is and so that everyone can wish him a happy fifty-second birthday. That's Pat Lovelace. He will be up to speak soon and everyone can wish him a happy birthday. The other thing, I just wanted to let everyone know that if I nod off tonight it's because I was up all night with my son and his wife who had their first son. It's their fourth child but their first son.
Congratulations.
Yes, and I'll start off with congratulations to them. And that's all. Thank you.
Colleen?
Let's see. I attended the Long Branch-Slygo community meeting this weekend and was served good food and lots of people came and we had a good time, was had by all. Police department came and talked about the police programs. That was very nice. I wanted to thank the city code enforcement department for responding to the WSSC property that's becoming a construction dump at the corner of New Hampshire Avenue and Sligo Creek Parkway and that was something that we saw when we went on the walk for the master planning activity and had talked about and the planning staff had said that people had dumped stuff and then a WSSC had cleaned it up and it's been dumped on again. So it's probably going to be something that we're going to have to keep on top of for a while and work with WSSC with because, you know, once people start dumping it's really hard to get them to stop and I expect that WSSC will clean it up and it will recur. So code enforcement, I guess, has a direct line now to the proper person to call so we're in better shape. I kind of thought we were going to get some more detail in the budget information and we did get some on Parks and Recs. One of the things I spent a lot of time doing this year was learning more about the budget process which has helped me in my federal job but helped me immensely here in my city council job and I brought some materials to share with some of the other council folks and of course I picked recreation materials because that's the budget that I understand the best and so it's always best for me to go and look at that. But I brought some budget information from Gaithersburg and Rockville and the county and I was really interested to see that there is really a broad range of information that is provided. I think that the county's level of information is actually most like ours and the Rockville information is the most detailed and the Gaithersburg information is kind of in between. And so I guess I would like to see us move more towards the Rockville kind of style of information and would like to have a discussion about that, not tonight, but to move in that direction because I really feel like I need to have more information relative to the budget issues. And I also wanted to comment on the last meeting about some of the stuff relative to the summer recreation camps. I've read a couple of pieces, one from Gilbert in Tacoma.com and he always has a good time with me and one from, well, I have a good time with Gilbert as well, one from the Gazette and there was a characterization of the comments that I had made as if I'm opposed to kids having fun which really missed the point. The point was that I was opposed to taking the same ten kids to the amusement park eight times over the course of the summer, not that I objected to kids going to amusement parks or that I wanted to dictate what kinds of activities the kids did or that I ever had an issue with kids going canoeing or going whitewater rafting. In fact, I think those are good activities for the kids to do and they're very enriching. And one of the things that I did then was actually look at some of the camps that our recreation director highlighted and there's a couple of interesting points that I would like to note and then I will stop. Montgomery County's fee is actually $260, not $210 for their fee schedule and one of the interesting things about them is that the way that they prohibit or the way that they discourage the same kids going to the place over and over again is they only offer it for four weeks during the summer and they offer it at eight different locations and they never repeat it at the same location for any given week. So they collect a series of different kids over time and then other camps run their camps for two to four weeks at a time and so even though they go to the amusement park they only go once during that time period. And I would like to note because one of the things that I pointed out was that I thought that we had, if we offered kids something more, that they would pick something more than that and I think that's really evidenced by the city of Gaithersburg registration. If you look at their registration, you'll see that any teen program that the city of Gaithersburg offers that doesn't involve going to the amusement parks is full and all of the programs that they offer that involve going to the amusement parks have as many as 25 openings in them and the same is true for the Montgomery County and the Prince George's program. And that's all. Anyone else?
Yes, I would like to thank my colleagues very much for their thoughtful words and expressions of condolence and also the city employees. My father passed away a couple of weeks ago and your words and deeds were very comforting to me and the whole family so I wanted to be sure and thank you all very much for that.
I just wanted to remind the council about a meeting that's coming up on Wednesday. We'll be doing a walkthrough with county executive Leggett at the metro and talking about the transit issues that we've been advocating for for many years now. We're hoping that this will be seen as an important issue for him to take up on our behalf and that we will be joined by some DC officials as well as Womata officials and I look forward to my council colleagues being there. I know Jamie Raskin and Heather Mizier and Mark Elrich are all confirmed as well.
Anything else?
All right. We will go on to the public comment period. This is the time set aside in the agenda for comments on items that are not on our single special session item. If you have comments on the budget or anything else, this would be the appropriate time to bring those comments before the council. And just to remind you, when you come to the podium, would you introduce yourself and also keep your comments to three minutes? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. I'm the birthday boy in fifty-two, yeah. And also, one thing I wanted to say is I was coming back yesterday from something, my friend Jim noticed the sidewalks on Maple Avenue and the way that Maple Avenue has been looking much better and he felt good to have somebody appreciate my city. He's from Silver Spring and he's really appreciated the nice looking crosswalks we have and everything and I wanted to let you know that. But another thing too is it was brought to my attention that some, one of the newspapers in Tacoma Park has referred to our section of Maple Avenue as Lower Maple Avenue and I never heard of, heard a sign saying Lower Maple Avenue or Higher or Upper which always said Maple Avenue and I think that should be brought to their attention because it creates divisiveness among, you know, one area of income and another area of income. Some people are worried about that. And another thing too is I want people to know that the demonstrations went really great. I didn't make it here last week because we didn't get back from the demonstration in time, but the demonstrations on Mother's Day and on Monday, the day after, went great. We had a fairly good turnout but we do need to, if anyone out there is listening, we do need to let them know that we need their, not just their opinions, we need their bodies and they need to vote with their feet when it went on this war issue. You know, we got to, we're starting to make some headway on it. We need as many people as we can, you know, and we had a great Mother's Day march because we were tired of seeing mothers burying their children. That's something that should not be have to do is a mother getting a knock on that door on Mother's Day and some of them did, you know, and it was, it's really tragic. We need as many people out there to march against that war as we can. And I hope every one of you people on the council, any mothers out there, I hope you've all had a wonderful Mother's Day and a safe Mother's Day. And one other thing is I heard it was Policeman Law Enforcement Appreciation Day and I want people, want you to know that one law enforcement person is Corporal Tina Smith. She has been very wonderful having her around our building, very wonderful having her around our neighborhood. She is a very dedicated worker and I think the city, if it's possible, she writes some kind of proclamation for her, you know, because she has been above and beyond her call, you know, helping us with Franklin Apartments and helping keep our neighborhood a safe place to live. And it'd be great because I think everybody should give a hand to Corporal Tina Smith and our new police chief. I think we need to do that. It's part of Law Enforcement Appreciation Week and it would be great if we could somehow get some kind of letter of appreciation written up by the city for Tina Smith. Is that possible?
Well, we have a fairly well-structured program by which the police officers that have done outstanding work are recognized every year at the police banquet and there's a structure by which they are selected for certain kinds of awards so the council is respectful of that process.
Yeah, but I think Tina is doing really great. I love her, she is well, I want her to know, if she's listening, she is well-loved among the community.
I'm sure she would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. But also the idea of Lower Maple Avenue, that needs to be corrected.
My assumption is that refers to its altitude since it's not at the top of the hill but certainly your comments are well-taken.
Yeah, but there's no Upper and Lower Sherman Avenue and there's no Upper and Lower Lee and there's no Upper and Lower Carroll Avenue.
Pat, as the council member for the true Lower Maple Avenue, I think that it's a misnomer to call your neck of the woods Lower Maple because it's the higher numbers.
That's what I was thinking too.
And so lower numbers are 7100 through 7400 and that's in Ward 1 and then Ward 4 is the Upper Maple Avenue. So thanks for bringing it to our attention that people have gotten this wrong.
But it shouldn't be either way. It shouldn't be either way because that makes people think, you know, one section's better than the other, you know?
Well, thank you for that comment. Appreciate it and congratulations on your birthday.
Oh, I know. Thank you, Mayor Porter. Did you get my phone call about the, yes?
Yes, I appreciated the phone call.
You're calling me, you're...
Was it your birthday too?
No.
Oh.
No.
With Mother's Day.
Yeah, I believe he made phone calls to a number of council members on Mother's Day which we all appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, remember Tacoma Park, we need the people out here for the peace marches and everything. Come on out and show us, show we are a peace-loving city.
Okay. Thank you, Pat.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I'm Dave Lorenz and I think most of you on council are acquaintances and friends of ours. As you know, I'm the founder and producer of the Tacoma Park Jazz Fest and with the Jazz Fest being June 9th, we are in the thick of the last activities, running furiously around like chickens with our heads cut off to do the last things that need to be taken care of to put the Jazz Fest on. This, as you may know, is my final one. We're moving up to Pennsylvania after this but, and of course, we plan the Jazz Fest on a long term. Many times I decide what the theme for the next one is going to be shortly after the previous one and often by the end of that summer I have engaged many or most of the artists for it. But here about a month before the Jazz Fest, we have suddenly found out that we're having a scheduling problem in that I got an email from Barb Matthews saying that we're, although we have had the Jazz Fest until seven o'clock from the very first one that we've ever had through this one, the 12th annual one, all of a sudden, a month before the Jazz Fest, we are supposed to cut it short by an hour and end it at six instead of seven and this apparently comes from Darrell Braithwaite at City Public Works. There was a problem last year in that the piano company was late picking up the piano and thereby making the Public Works guys late closing up the stage and taking it off of the lot. But this year, actually the stage is being provided by Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning Commission and they are putting the stage up and they are also tearing it down and so this is something that piano or not, and we're going to give an earful to the piano company, piano or not, that's one less thing and a rather lengthy procedure that the Public Works guys are going to have to do. Plus of the ordinarily 300 folding chairs, there's only going to be 200 this year and so that's a third less. But at any rate, Kathy Porter has kindly had a word with Darrell about this and the next step is for me to see if I can work this out with Darrell. But I wanted to give you a heads up just in case I had to come back to you to actually arbitrate. I'm hoping that Darrell and I can work this out because Darrell and I have had a long, as far as I've been aware, a happy relationship and I certainly would like it to continue. This is my last one and we've actually had an extra set provided for us by a very prominent band so we've had to add an extra set and take five minutes off of all the other sets and half an hour off of the jam session to cram them in but we're going to be able to have in this occasion eight sets within the usual span of time between 11:00 and 7:00 PM. But at any rate, I'm going to talk to Darrell as soon as possible, try to work this out and hopefully this will be the last you'll hear of it.
Well, I thank you. I think both, there are some justifiable concerns on both sides of this and I did encourage you to speak directly to Darrell about it and I'm pleased that you're going to be doing that.
So at any rate, thank you and nice to see you all again. It's been a long time since we had occasion to actually be here in person at the council meeting.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Would anyone else like to speak? Why don't you come on up to the podium?
Hello, thank you. My name is Amy Eisner and I'd like to let you know if you haven't already heard or seen some of our folks that are in our group, the Impeach Bush Chaney groups that have been meeting across the country. We have a local Tacoma Park group that is growing and we also work in tandem with the Silver Spring group and what we are planning to do in the next, probably the next month or so, is sort of push through the idea of Tacoma Park adopting a resolution of impeachment as several hundred other cities in the United States have done. We are keenly aware that the actual articles of impeachment may not hit the federal level or the, even though Kucinich has introduced it, but we think that it's very important for our local cities and towns to at least have a dialogue about this issue. The end means aren't to really have impeached so much as to hold our federal leaders accountable and I just wanted to thank you for letting me talk for a minute and you will probably see more of us coming in on Monday nights to sort of push it through.
Okay, thank you. And I know members of your group have met with me and also with Councilmember Williams and I don't know, perhaps some other members of the council also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, if there's no one else, we'll move on to the next item which is the city manager's update.
I would just like the opportunity to respond to Mr. Lorenz's comments because I don't think it was exactly on point. As I had shared with the mayor when she indicated that Mr. Lorenz had contacted her, part of the concern is that we did not actually have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Lorenz when he was setting up his schedule. The customary practice with festivals is that we will receive a letter from whoever is the organizing party. Hopefully those meetings take place early in the process. Once I, we were in the process of setting up that meeting at Mr. Lorenz's request, I did go ahead and give him the heads up that there had been a concern expressed by the Public Works Department about the fact that the event had run over by about an hour. My understanding from Ms. Braithwaite is it's not a new issue, it was something that was discussed last year at the time it occurred. As I had shared with the mayor and I'd like to share with the rest of the council, part of the concern is that if an event runs over and it's starting to get to the point that it is becoming dark outside, that becomes very problematic for our staff to be trying to take equipment down during the evening hours and obviously that's something that we need to address before the evening is over. We can't really be leaving things outside and we need to make sure the park is also in good shape for any patrons who wish to use it early Sunday morning by removing trash. I think Ms. Braithwaite and certainly the rest of the staff makes every effort to try to work with our community and with festival organizers but when it's all said and done, I do need to make sure that the conditions in which the staff are working are safe. So certainly, Ms. Braithwaite, I'm sure we'll be talking to Mr. Lorenz directly and we'll keep the council apprised as those discussions move forward. I did want to provide some background for the council.
Thank you. Was there anything else that you liked, needed to share with the council? Okay.
Mayor Porter?
Yes.
Barb, I wondered if the, if there is a city liaison that works with the Jazz Festival. I know for the Independent State Committee, there's a city staff person who historically has worked with the committee, attended their meetings and helped to plan the event and coordinate with the city.
The way it has traditionally worked with many of the festivals, Councilmember Seaman's, not only the Jazz Festival but the Folk Festival, is there are representatives from a variety of departments and those planning meetings take place basically throughout the year but typically so many of these festivals, you know, have been ongoing for some time but there's usually a major organizational meeting where everyone from the staff from the various departments is present and they kind of work out the details. So I don't think there's just one liaison to the Jazz Festival just as there's not one liaison for the Folk Festival, for example.
Okay, and...
Peggy Washington is primarily Mr. Lorenz's point of contact though if there is a question that he has outside of those meetings.
With the individual who has been the liaison to the Independent State Committee no longer working for the city, I wonder if we're planning on appointing someone new to be the liaison?
I believe Ms. Hade of Intention Staff Gregory Clark, the Assistant Director, serve in that capacity but I'll confirm that with her.
Okay, it sounds like that works well and has worked well in the past to have a liaison and maybe it's something we should consider and approach that we consider for other events too.
Any other council questions or comments? Okay, we will move on to the next item. We have two interviews this evening, the first with Jane Johnson for the Board of Elections. Ms. Johnson, do you want to come up here, either to the podium or the table, whatever We appreciate your volunteering for the Board of Elections and I note that you have been an election judge for a number of elections and I think, I don't remember if you've been an election judge for our elections.
Yes.
I believe so, yes. I don't remember, we have so many good people who have volunteered for our elections. I guess the question that I would have, the only question I would have is if you could just talk a little bit about your, and we've got some information on your qualifications but if you wanted to go into them and your interest in serving on the Board of Elections.
Basically, my major interest is that I'd just like to know a little bit more about the function of the Board of Elections. I've been a judge for, since 1996 and we go in, we do the judge thing and go home. I'd like to know what the process is leading up to that so I don't have a whole lot of experience in that aspect of it but I think I'm qualified because I've gone through the training every four years and I've done, as far as I know, well because they keep calling me back, so I'm assuming that I've done well and I'd just like to be involved in my community more so. I haven't had the opportunity to do that since my children grew up. When they were small, I was very active in the community but we kind of got more involved in what they were doing and I got away from the community activities and now I'm getting almost to the point of retirement and I know I'm going to want something to do to get out of the house so this was a good start for me.
Well, I certainly think you've got a good background for it and we do appreciate your volunteering. Anyone else on the council have any questions for Ms. Johnson?
I just want to thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Yeah, same here. I would like to thank you for volunteering also and I noticed that your background might lend itself to what I'll call marketing activities which are to increase voter registration which I think is a continuing need here.
Yes, I would hope so.
Well, thank you very much for volunteering. We very much appreciate it. We'll be doing the appointments. I think we still have a couple of people to interview and we'll be doing the appointments as soon as we can because I know the city clerk very much wants the help of everyone on the board so we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you all and thank you for taking the time to interview me.
Well, thank you for coming. We also have Ann Ludlow for the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Ms. Ludlow, I very much appreciate the information you gave us and it sounds like Tacoma Towers has done a fair amount of work already and you probably well up on what a lot of the things the Emergency Preparedness Committee is doing. I'd like to give you the same opportunity to talk a little bit about your interest and your background in the emergency preparedness issue.
Thank you. Well, I'm interested in preparation for emergencies. Not everybody is but it's something that I feel is a very important thing in our community and our personal life so that's one qualification, being interested. I led the Emergency Planning Committee at Victory Tower for six years and we did a lot of preparation research with FEMA and Red Cross and the county and the city and we had people come in that we interviewed who were responsible for various areas of emergency Really worked up quite a plan. We had events that for the residents to see what needed to be done, like how to prepare a kit for sheltering in place and those kinds of things and we prepared a handbook for each resident so that all the things that, not all the things you need to know, but a lot of them are here dealing with fire and tornadoes and lack of water and all those various kinds of things.
Well, as I said, it does seem that you have a lot of experience. You also mentioned that you had been involved in helping the Red Cross with trying out an emergency preparedness toolkit for small to medium-sized organizations.
Right.
And that you actually did some research that helped to contribute to the final product that they put out.
Yes.
So it sounds like you have a lot of experience. Also, I'm very pleased to have somebody from Victory Tower involved in this because that is a very vulnerable population and I think the preparations that we make should definitely take the needs of that population into account.
It was quite, excuse me, a shock for me moving into a big apartment building with 187 people and suddenly realizing what kind of effect that some of these terrible things might have on this enclosed group of people. that some of these terrible things might have on this enclosed group of people, many of whom are not physically able to evacuate. And all the different kinds of steps and things that we need to do for that group. I think possibly there are other places in the city that could benefit from some of those, too.
I very much appreciate that. And I appreciate your volunteering.
Thank you. And Ann, thank you so much for the work that you've done there and also for volunteering for the city's Emergency Preparedness Committee. You know, I've looked at your handbook and it was developed at Victory Towers. And it's a great piece of work. My wife has shared it with some of the residents at the Franklin Apartments, who have a residence that's similar to yours and that there are a lot of seniors and disabled residents. Corporal Smith from the Tacoma Park Police Department held an emergency preparedness discussion at one of the recent luncheons, I believe it was in April, and had the police department, the fire department and some other emergency preparedness agencies come and talk with the residents. But I certainly would support your application for the Emergency Preparedness Committee. And I hope that you will consider maybe reaching out and helping some of the residents of the Franklin Apartments to get started on forming their own committee to work towards preparing their building in the same way that Victory Towers has been prepared through the work of you and the other residents.
I'd be glad to talk with them.
Be great. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I would also like to thank you, Ann, for volunteering. It is a great committee to serve on and very important that Tacoma Victory Tower is represented there. And I can certainly understand your interest in emergency planning, given the nature of Victory Tower. So thank you again for coming forward.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you very much for your interest. I'm, I think we're going to be doing the -- just looking to see if I can find where on the schedule we're doing the appointments. But I'm sure it's sometime soon. And we will definitely let you know. Very much appreciate your coming forward. And I think it would be great to have somebody from Victory Tower, particularly somebody with your experience on the committee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're moving now into our special session. And the only item on our special session agenda is the first reading of an ordinance related to rent stabilization. Ken, did you want to say anything as this is introduced?
This matter is something that Dr. Barb raised in his memo to the council. And it's something that we hope to avoid addressing prior to complete recodification of the rent stabilization section. But it's, it's an issue that has been raised by a landlord and something that, given the delay in recodifying rent control, I think it's worthwhile to amend the code to address this issue to make sure our ordinance passes constitutional muster.
And it's a fairly small issue, but an important one and something that I don't think there's any dissension on the council about. So the idea is that we're just going to go ahead and make the change and then proceed with the other larger rent stabilization codification issues. I believe we've got the next one. I know that we've got the next one scheduled for next Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day. All right, you've got the proposed ordinance in front of you. Does someone want to move the ordinance?
Move, seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any council comments on the ordinance? Yes.
Actually brought this up, as you may recall, when I first became a council member. And I said that I thought that we had a constitutional issue with how we treated people differently based on whether or not they had a mortgage. And I was assured that there wasn't one. However, I'm glad to see that we're going to address this. Right now, the mechanism to address it that's supported by the majority of the council is to select the two mech, of the two mechanisms, the one that provides the least amount of income back to the landlords. And I'm going to vote for it anyway because I know that, or I guess I have faith that in the next two months, we're going to pass more comprehensive regulations that are going to make it much easier and much more sensible in terms of the operating income relationships and try to, try to work out some of the issues that we have with how rent control is managed so that it works for both the landlords and the tenants.
My understanding is that the percentage is more consistent with the percentages used in other instances. The 50% is more consistent with the percentages used in other instances.
Right, it's consistent with the remainder of the existing code. We may move in a completely different direction.
Right. We, yes, and this shouldn't be taken to mean that the council intends to stretch out the discussion. I hope we can maintain a more rapid pace. But it doesn't hurt to just deal with this one small issue. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any council comments, additional council comments? Are there any public comments on this ordinance? All right, seeing none. This is the first reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes at first reading. We are just about on schedule. And we are going to take a very short break and come back for the budget work session. The council had actually expressed an interest in last year. And it's coming up again this year. And we don't, I'd like to have the council have an opportunity to discuss this, but you don't really need to design the whole program this evening. I don't think we have enough time to do that. The minimum amount that we need to get done this evening is for the council to decide whether or not we want to have such a program. And if we do, how much we want to allocate to the program. And then that amount would end up on the list of reconciliation items for the following discussion. So we need a yes or no. And if the answer is yes, there needs to be a number attached. or no and if the answer is yes, there needs to be a number attached to it. That's what we need to get done. And if the council does wish to have such a program, I'll go ahead and schedule a longer discussion where we can talk about exactly what the program would look like. But I didn't intend that this would be enough time for us to make all those decisions this evening. So, I don't know, is there somebody who wants to make any introductory comments on this? Other than what I just said? Colleen?
Inter introductory comments?
No, no. I just want to make sure if there's any comments the staff wanted to make. I take the answer is no, so I guess we're into the discussion.
So, I guess the only thing that I would like to say is that I would really like to have some kind of a policy so that we don't have all these groups coming to us on an individual basis. I don't have a sense of what the number is or what the policy is, but we should do something and because I'm uncomfortable with the kind of piecemeal way that we've been going about it.
I agree. I think we need a policy. I think it would be good to start out with a small amount of budget to, as we get this up and running. As I looked at the examples of other municipalities that have these set up, I kind of liked the College Park process and the way they set it up. And I would figure that I had in my head for what we might want to put in there to get something like this up and running was five thousand.
If I could just ask the city manager, I think we did three grants this year or three assistance to nonprofits. Is that correct? I think it was more than five thousand. That's what I'm sort of trying to get at.
I think it depends how you define it. Obviously, the city gives considerable support to various organizations, both in-kind.
In-kind support.
Right, which certainly exceeds more than five thousand dollars for the various festivals as well as essentially an ad that we place for the Jazz Fest, which is on top of the in-kind support. In terms of outright financial support, this year I believe there was twenty-five hundred dollars that the council had agreed to give to Historic Tacoma as a, to serve as a sponsor for the House and Garden Tour. And then there is an existing memorandum of understanding that has been in place for several years with the Old Tacoma Business Association by which the council provides matching funds in support of the Main Street Initiative.
Carrie, are you done with this?
And the amount for that match is?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
I hadn't been thinking of that as falling under this.
That's, I think that's really, in my mind, viewed as something different. It's considerable support and towards an economic development initiative.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's more like economic development.
So, the twenty-five hundred that went to Mr. Tacoma was the one that I was aware of when I was thinking of it.
Other than the festivals that we support, which would be the Folk Festival, the Jazz Festival, and the Old Tacoma Street Festival, nothing else is coming to mind other than?
But that's all in-kind?
The only one that is not strictly in-kind is we do pay for an advertisement in the brochure for the Jazz Festival, which is actually purchasing an ad. So, it's for advertising, not just the trash pickup or other types of support. I'm not, Wayne, is there anything I'm missing in terms of grants that we've given? Or is it financial support or sponsorships?
Carrie?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I think it would be very helpful to get a comprehensive list of the organizations and make sure that we do have them all covered. Don't we give money to the, this just came out today, the Business Directory, don't we give money to this organization to help put this book together?
Yeah, that is something that is done in sponsorship. Obviously, we have a number of pages in that. I'd have to go through the detail.
Again, I think that's a fair question because it's one of the ones, I think, that should be on the list when we're talking about this because it has an aspect that's different from some of the festivals or some of the other organizations that we support and something we should, if we're going to have a policy, we should probably talk about this type of funding also. But there are the events and then there's the organizations in the city that, some of which we give support to. I think the Independence Day Committee gets some money for that event. I know that we use some CDBG money and are we going to include that under the umbrella of any new policy? Those organizations?
It has its own requirement, CDBG does.
Anyways, I think it would just be very helpful to have a comprehensive list of what we do now.
Would you, Councilmember Seaman, just so I'm clear, would you want included in that, an estimate of what the city spends in terms of in-kind support for the various festivals? I just want to make sure I'm clear on the request.
I think that would be helpful.
Okay, we'd be happy to do that.
And certainly the direct financial support also.
Since we're not likely to be able to get that prior to reconciliation this evening, I think we're just going to have to sort of come up with a number and go forward with that. Anybody else want to speak to this topic?
I would like to say something that I think would benefit nonprofit groups and that is something that the council actually approved for the House and Garden Tour and that is a shuttle, a circulator, connector. The reason that we talked about it this year was because the Old Town Business or Old Tacoma Business Association was interested in having the same patrons of the House and Garden Tour, you know, visit and have easy access to the Old Tacoma businesses. And I think that is also something that comes up when the arts, what is it called? The Artist Studio Tour happens, which is in November or December, I believe. So, I'd really like to see the city help organize that aspect of, or facilitate that aspect for those two events. They are institutionalized and I think they, especially the House and Garden Tour, has a long history and the Artist Studio Tour was very well received in the last year and in my view would be enhanced by the connecting to the Old Town businesses and the metro. I believe that that would be less expensive than the cash that was given to the House and Garden Tour. But see it as a way that the city can facilitate something that is good for multiple groups in our city limits and not just a cash grant to one.
Well, we have one proposal on the table, which is a five thousand dollar amount. If we went with that amount, we probably would be able to give only two or three grants.
Depends on if we put a limit. I know that Rockville is for over that. Their applications are for over that.
And I think some of it depends on what we consider. You know, what are the organizations and what are the things we're calling grants to organizations? Because, again, this money that we have put into this book, is that part of what we're talking about? Is the money to the Independence Day Committee part of it?
That's clearly part of the issue is how comprehensive we want this to be. There are a number of things that the city has taken up that I don't really think of as grants. For example, the Business Directory and Survival Guide is something that the city uses to get out information on city services to every household or supposedly every household.
So, you're saying we're just buying ads in it?
No.
No, if you look in the front, yeah.
We're cooperating with them and we're.
If you look in the front, there's both English and Spanish versions of city services, phone numbers, description of the tree ordinance, I think the historic district.
Well worth the cost.
It's something that the city invests a small amount of money to get that word out and then the nursery school invests a huge amount of labor to get the ads coordinated and distribute the books after they're designed and printed.
Well, my concern though is that this is done as a business proposition and we don't at any time, I mean, they're doing this to, not just as a community service, but also to make money for their organization. And I don't, I'm not aware at any time that we've asked to review, you know, how much money they're making, how much they're charging for ads, things like that, to see whether our support is at the level that's appropriate.
Well, I mean, I don't think that we're going to have enough time this evening to decide how widely the group should be, how widely we should set the criteria for who's included. But I suggest that that does seem to be an issue that we should look into as we get to talking about this. The other thing I was going to say is that there has been a longstanding tradition of working with the Independence Day Committee, that I think the Independence Day Committee has always sort of been outside of our idea of giving grants to nonprofits because we're kind of unusual. Most cities put on their own Independence Day festivities, but in our case, it's a separate group that does it. But as that group has had more and more difficulty recruiting members, the city has sort of taken over more and more of it. So, I'm not sure that that's exactly the same thing. But again, this is an issue that I think we will have to address at some time in the future.
My only question is if you're talking about five thousand dollars, you know, which kinds of groups are in and which kinds of groups are out in the use of that five thousand dollars?
Well, to a certain extent, my understanding is that the city manager has assumed certain grants to people that are already in the budget. Am I correct in that?
Well, not to follow up on Councilmember Seaman's point, I guess it depends what you think of as a grant. The city has long budgeted for the Independence Day Committee. I believe it's, Wayne can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's like eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. That is included in the non-departmental section of the budget. That has been something that's been such a longstanding tradition that we just budget for that. Similarly, all the departments, you know, take into account the Folk Festival and any type of overtime associated with that, the Jazz Festival, the Street Festival. Those have really been the consistent items that we just have traditionally budgeted for because that's been the city's practice for a number of years.
And I don't know that we give them cash. It's more like in-kind support, isn't it?
Most of the issues with the Independence Day Committee.
I meant for the other ones. It's mostly in-kind, isn't it?
Basically, the only one, as I mentioned, that would be an exception to that would be the ad for the Jazz Band Brawl and I think some other publication that they do, which is an outright payment for advertising in that publication.
And that's similar to what we could for the House and Garden Tour. Isn't that right?
Right. I mean, we did basically get listed as a sponsor and their advertising.
Right. So, my sense in suggesting the five thousand was to cover those types of activities, those cash outlay for advertising and programs, other potential ways to do it, not for any of the in-kind, not for the Fourth of July.
I'm not opposed to any of this. I mean, I think that each of these organizations need some support and I think that in the past, we've used pretty good discretion about where we've placed that support. I'm just trying to understand what the five thousand dollars is to be used for and whether that's going to screw us up on any of the other ones that we've had these longstanding.
My intent was that it was going to cover what we've done very recently and there was going to be a little bit more so that we could look at those that we've done recently and look at other possibilities and maybe, you know, let people know that there is this and see what else people come up with. And while not going too much over what we've been doing now, just to see as we get started, what level is needed.
My assumption would be that if we set this program up and advertise its availability, we will get a lot more requests than we did last year. All right, there's a proposal on the table. Is the council comfortable with that? I mean, I think that the proposal is.
Came out of my back pocket. I don't have any idea whether that's good or not. I don't know.
Well.
Well, we don't know.
There's two pieces to this. I'm assuming since people are talking about it as if it's going to happen, that the council is generally in agreement that we want to move forward with a program like this. Is anybody who's not in agreement with that? Okay, and Bruce has put a five thousand dollar figure. It is sort of hard to know what that would cover. My assumption would be that if we put the five thousand dollars in the budget and it turned out halfway through the year that we really needed six, that we could.
I mean, I think there's two ways to handle this. Either the council could make a decision this evening about the amount that you want to allocate. I wouldn't suggest this is a normal practice, but if the council wants to see the list that Councilmember Seaman's has alluded to, to get more information, that's certainly something you could deal with, you know, using the unappropriated reserve if that's your preference, is that you'd rather not make a decision until you have more information.
I assume this excludes advisory committees and committee on the environment.
Yeah, that's all separate.
Those are, yeah, the funding for that is in a different part of the budget. So, if I'm understanding where we are, the council wants to set up a program like this and wants to put essentially a marker of five thousand in the budget to begin that program. Is that where I think we are? Okay, Colleen?
So, does this first come first served or do we have a process where everyone applies at some point and it all goes to the council altogether?
That at some point we'll have to make that decision. I don't think we've got enough, I didn't set aside enough time for us to make all of those decisions. If the council gives staff direction that we want to move forward, then what we'll need to do is have to come back and come back and have a discussion very specifically about how the program would be structured. But at this point, I think all we need to do is we need to, if we want to, if we want to say yes to this program, we need to put some funding in the budget. The five thousand sounds as reasonable as anything else. If we decide five, it would be very difficult to go to fifty, but if we decide at five, it wouldn't be difficult to go to six.
Okay. I just want to say that, I guess I don't want to go to the point where we pick five and then later we go up to six because to me, the value of this is that it happens one time and so just whatever it is, is what it is. And I don't want it to be this process, well, we go through this process and then later somebody else comes back and asks for a thousand dollars and somebody else two thousand. So, I just put that out there. What it is is what it is and I'm happy with that. Whatever it is.
Well, I mean, generally, I think that that's a good idea. The first year, since we're unclear as to what this would look like, the first year may be an exception. But, go ahead. I'm sorry, Joy got her hand up first.
I just, I missed part of the discussion. I apologize. I was calling back a constituent. But the, I would hesitate before authorizing a grant process. I think that the five thousand dollars makes sense, given what we have recently funded, but, and also what we have talked about funding. I think we approved a thousand dollars or twelve hundred dollars or something like that for the transportation at the House and Garden Tour, though that was not expended. There are other groups that can do this better. I think about Tacoma Foundation. I think about Sligo, what is that called? Adventist?
Adventist Community Services.
Community Services, thank you. And those groups are ones that I could see the city giving money to in order to distribute grants, but I really couldn't see the city setting up a grant-making process, especially for such a small amount. The council, if we put this five thousand in the budget, I think the request should come to the council and be funded out of that pot. Up to, that is a limit. I agree with Colleen on that.
Bruce?
I just, I just wanted to speak very quickly to Colleen's point about, you know, is it first come first served? I think the process that it looked like both Rockville and College Park had was there was a deadline, there was an application period, and then you considered them all at once and that's it for the year.
There's also a process the county has that we could take a look at. Carrie?
Okay, I think the, nothing, no. I've talked enough. Thank you.
Okay. Is there consensus on setting up a program at a later date and deciding, you know, the parameters and everything, but putting a marker of five thousand in the budget to fund the program for this year? Okay, all right, we've got a decision. Now, we're going to move on to the next and the final item, which is the reconciliation list. And to the things on the list, and we hope you can help us with putting together those. those parameters, Kim. To that list, you should add the $5,000 we just decided on. We have, with those things, we'll have 127,500 of items that are not currently in the budget that the council needs to deal with. I would note that there's one, which I think is different than the others, which is the local supplement to the state tax credit. That one is funded, it needs $50,000 more than what's in the budget, but in order to make that, have that money not expended, we would have to change the law. It's not something we can say, well, we're not going to fund it in the budget because it's, it's essentially an entitlement program. So I think that one, unless the council wishes to, to change the way the program works, I think that one we've got.
You're saying that the $50,000 is allowed by the law or not?
The $50,000 is required by the current law.
Okay, thank you.
The way the program is set up, if that's what it's going to cost us this year, is $50,000 more than was put into the budget.
That's the estimate, estimate.
Well, this is the, yes, this is the city manager and the finance director's best estimate. This is the program which provides grants, or, I'm sorry, back on the last discussion, provides rebates to property owners whose property taxes are high in relation to their income. It's piggyback on the state and county programs that do the same thing. We use the criteria that those programs use and simply add a supplement to the grants they receive from the county and from the state to cover their city property taxes. The other items, however, are items that the council has discussed and are not currently funded.
Could I?
Yes.
Make a request?
Yes.
For the second item, the council training and conference $3,000, I would be happy to withdraw that. My point was that I think we might need more money for that, given the discussion we had, but I'm happy to leave the budgeted figure as it is and we'll see how that goes.
Okay.
Because I'm, where I am right now, I agree what we just talked about, about the $50,000 for the tax credit, and I'm on board for the grants for the $5,000 we just talked about, and that's as far as I'm willing to go.
Okay. Joy?
A couple of things. One is I support the PDA expenditure. I think that's a, a sound policy decision the council is in the process of making and would, would like to see that available to support our council work. The $5,000 is, just picking a number, and I think that, that the council could err on the lower side, $4,000 or $3,000, as the year progresses and, and different proposals are brought to us. The $50,000 for the state tax credit, I, I heartily endorse. And then, for me, that brings it up to about $59,500. I'm looking over at the email that Barb sent, and Barb, I appreciate you doing this, I know it's difficult to put things on the chopping block, but I would like to see the council consider the, the top four things on there that, that would be sources for us to make up this difference. And I would like to see the council eliminate the, the bottom four items in our consideration. I, I don't think that any of those four on the lower half will be necessary, once we come to a, a total amount that's needed and seeing that the new design charette and the infrastructure improvements are unallocated or unspecified right now, I think that would be the place to take maybe $30,000 out of each.
Bruce, did you have any ideas of how to find your, things on your list?
I, I guess, like Joy said, I would, I would look to find something in the top four list.
Okay, let me, let me just put, and I understand that I may get no other support for this. Last year, there was a great deal of discussion about the police evidence clerk, and if you remember, I was not in favor of adding that position to the budget. And I am very much in favor of the crime analyst, because I think that that's a good thing to do and I think the chief made a very good case for that. But I note that in the past year, this urgently needed position has not been filled, the police evidence clerk. And I guess, if it were up to me, I would put that $35,000 on the chopping block, simply because I'm not, I remain unconvinced that the police department cannot adequately keep track of evidence using the staff they already have, particularly since they've had the authorization for a year and haven't hired anybody. So I would take out the $35,000 for the police evidence clerk. In terms of things, I guess I'd, I would be, I would come out, I think, similar to where Bruce does. I think we really do have a fairly tight budget. I think the supplement to the state tax credit is something we very much need to do to maintain the fairness and the safety net under our property tax system. I also would agree with the comments that were made about the grants program. And so I think if it were up to me, I would put the $50,000 for the state tax credit and the $5,000 for the grants program on the list. I would fund it by eliminating the police evidence clerk and then taking the remaining amount, half out of the design charette and half out of the pedestrian safety infrastructure improvements. Colleen?
Well, let's see. I will support the PDA issue, and I would have supported the council training and conference monies, even though I don't actually intend to use any of them, but I, I will say that one of the things that has become really clear to me in my year and a half that I've been on the council is that the connections that people make and when they go to these conferences and activities have been extremely valuable to the city. They've been very valuable around the metro center issues. I think they've been valuable around just a variety of issues, including, you know, dealing with rebate issues and working with the county and everything, so I'll throw that out there. I absolutely support the local supplement to the state tax credit. And I support the $5,000 for the community grants. So of the ones that are still on the table, that's the $50,000, the $9,500, and then the $5,000 for the community grants. I agree with Joy. I don't support the elimination where the, I don't support action on any of the lower items on the memo for what was suggested. I also don't want to eliminate any of the things in the, in the upper end, and particularly, I do not want to have any reduction in the pedestrian safety infrastructure improvements. I think that pedestrian safety is an important issue in our community. I know it's important to my constituents and the county and the, and DC and, and I don't know if PG is involved, but there's, you know, a big push on right now for pedestrian safety and I, I think that that's, that's critical. It's, it's what's helping us get sidewalks and curb cuts and, you know, all those kinds of things that are important to people. What I was going to suggest is that there is $1,018,000 of miscellaneous funds listed for expenditure in the budget, and I guess that's where I would look to find the $64,500. It's not that I'm, I don't think that the city manager, you know, picked out good items, but I think, you know, if I had a clearer, deeper look at the budget and more information, I might actually be able to identify some other items, because it's clear here, we all have different values about what's important to us. And so that's actually what I would do, is cut it out of the miscellaneous funds. However, I am reminded that last year, when we went through this process and we ended up with a, a small number in terms of the reconciliation, the city manager was actually able to negotiate that within, I think the, the fund balance or you had, you had some, you had some magic solution for us, didn't you? Give a magic solution for us.
You know, I think a lot of this is, is just a matter of scale. I would say that the, the email that I sent you all earlier was in response to a request of Councilmember Sniper, and obviously, going into this reconciliation process, staff didn't really have a sense of how much the council wanted to fund beyond what was included in my proposed budget. Mr. Hobbs and the Director of Finance and I talked about it earlier, I think if you're talking about limiting your additions to the local supplement to the state tax credit and, you know, some very minor items above that, the reality is we're doing projections that could likely be accommodated. There is a point at which if you continue, if you were to fund, for instance, we talked about this earlier this evening among the staff, the council had wanted to fund a grant program of $50,000 to $100,000, that's a whole different scale than $5,000. I think if you're limiting it to some of the items that there appear to be consistent support on, I don't think it would give me a particular heartburn to say that could probably be accommodated, because as we've talked about before, the projections that we're doing on the fund balance assume that the entire unappropriated reserve is expended during the year. That doesn't typically happen. I don't think it's ever happened, based on my conversations with Mr. Hobbs. I did want to, why I have to, before this comment, I was a council member, Clay has expressed concern throughout the budget process about the miscellaneous classification, and I just want to be clear for anyone who's watching, that's not a, a term that the staff has used. When you set up a financial system, and the current system was set up long before Ms. Brooks and I were here, you set up internally what is known as a chart of accounts, and that breaks into expenditures into certain categories, and that's going to be the ones that are reflected in your budget document in terms of services and charges and supplies and personnel costs, and basically it was determined to be miscellaneous, that it was done under a different city manager and a different finance director. I would say Councilmember Clay, that's probably not the chart of accounts that I would probably have necessarily picked. There's always going to be some miscellaneous, and I think your concern is well-founded and you're not the first council member I've heard that from in my career. But just so no one's misunderstanding that there's some over million dollar, you know, totally unallocated money among the issues that are included in miscellaneous, rightly or wrongly, when the chart of accounts was set up many years ago, are things such as the tipping fees for sanitation charges, which I think Ms. Brooks, we had addressed, which is over $230,000 of that number. When Ms. Brooks joined the city, she and I've had a number of discussions since that time about whether or not we should put in a different chart of accounts. Part of the difficulty when you do that is it's just physically impossible to map every single old account to a new account, and you essentially lose any sense of historical data, except at a very global level. If that's something the council would like to talk about when you have further discussions about the budget, you know, that's perfectly fine, but that's some of the discussions we've had internally about that issue.
If I'm understanding where the sense of the council is right now, that there is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. I would actually, I, I support all the proposed additions. And I would, if it were up to me, I would take out the money from, just the first one, the design charette.
If I could, may I make one other comment? Just to the council, as you talk about this, I did want to just share that there is a point at which, with some of the items included, especially those that are on the, the top half, that if you start taking certain amounts, you might as well just eliminate the whole item. The council just approved a contract for a design charette on the more southern end of New Hampshire, as Ms. Daines, I think, mentioned during her budget presentation, at least what staff had envisioned pending discussions with the council, of course, was that there would be further design charette work further north on New Hampshire Avenue. The contract the council just approved for the Ethan Allen Gateway Charette was about $90,000 and was by far the lowest. So I just want to make it clear, I think if there's a concern about that amount, it probably doesn't practically make sense to chop it in half, because I'm not sure you could actually get it done. Similarly, when Ms. Daines and I met to discuss her budget on the commercial center improvements, she did think there was a point at which if it dropped below $50,000, it probably, from a practical standpoint, we wouldn't be able to do anything that would really have an impact. So I'm just sharing that with you as you talk about this, so that you have some sense of where you can take from certain items if you feel that's warranted.
I, I'd just like to, to add a couple of things to, or respond to a couple of things that Ruben mentioned. One is that, according to the information that we've got from the staff, Manah Food Project is in fact getting some money from CBDG. I think that that's an appropriate thing to do and I would be supportive of that, and I don't, I am not supportive of, of putting additional funding in the budget for that, particularly since we've just allocated $5,000 for all of the other grants that we want to provide. The other thing is, in terms of the request from CASA, the city of Tacoma Park has for a number of years funded the workers' center that CASA has been doing, and at the time that we funded it, it was understood to be sort of a stopgap measure, that we were sort of holding this program together until the county, counties could sort of take over from the city. And I very much supported that idea, and I'm glad that we did that. I think that was the appropriate thing to do. But having basically held the program together for a very long time, I feel that it's time for the counties to step up to the plate and support CASA. Now, CASA can also come in for additional CBDG funding, and if they were to do that, I would support them getting some. But I, I both support the interim funding we've been doing for CASA, but I think there comes a point at which the counties, both of them, going to have to step up and do, and basically fund the, the CASA day laborer centers, as Montgomery County is doing in Gaithersburg, and as Montgomery County has done with the workers' center on New Hampshire Avenue. I'm sorry, on University Boulevard.
Can I just get a clarification? I, I heard two things that didn't sound like they were the same understanding, and I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. On the new design charette, that's first on your list, Ms. Matthews, it sounds like that's for what area?
Obviously, ultimately, that's up to the council, as it was originally envisioned by Ms. Daines, and I think she may have indicated this in the memo that was included with the agenda packet for the HCD budget. Her staff basically envisioned that as being further charette work along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. That's obviously ultimately subject to the council's direction.
But that's not for the 410 area?
No.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's what I thought, because then, Colleen, like, the reaction I heard from you when he was saying to take the money out was, I thought you.
Happened because of, you know, us planners, we're always, we're always supposed to go.
Okay, I, I was thinking, you were thinking, oh, that was my money.
No, no, I was amused.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I hadn't run down through the list myself, so I would just say that I fully support the local supplement to the state tax credit, as I think all the other council members have. I think that's a great program. I think we knew it was great when we passed the law and I'm glad to see that those who need it are taking more advantage of it than have happened in the past. The, the other one that I support is, and maybe that was, I mischaracterized it by calling it a grant to the Manah Food Center. Basically, what I'm looking for is to address the needs of a member, a segment of our community that often doesn't get addressed at this, these council meetings, and that is the very low-income members of our community who need programs to help them get by from month to month and to help them to move to higher levels of self-sufficiency. So I would like to just change the, the way that money is earmarked, but I fully support the $10,000 to be used for a program. Similar to what we did last year with the job readiness training, something that will help people to get by, such as a food program and supplemental food program for their help, maybe free dental care or some assisted dental care for the young people who don't have dental care for, within their families, or maybe for some other program that would help people to move to a higher level of self-sufficiency. to move to a higher level of self-sufficiency, in which case it would not be a grant, it would be a competitive procurement, the nature of which could be proposed by the city staff.
I'm going to suggest at this point, I think, has everybody who wants to had a chance to talk?
No. I talked about the spending side, okay? On the input side, or the revenues side, maybe revenues isn't the right number, but the cuts, you know, where would I cut to get the money to pay for these programs? And I really appreciate council member Snipper's request for information about where the city staff and city manager would recommend cutting the budget. I found the email that we received on the 21st to be helpful, because it identified a number of different programs or steps that, with a specific dollar amount for what it's going to cost. I found it very helpful. But at the same time, I think it's very enlightening that numbers can be provided for each of these things, and yet we're not, we don't get those numbers for all of the programs and things that go on in the city, so that we can go through and decide where we feel it is appropriate, from each of our council members' perspective, to make the cuts, to fund, either fund other programs or to make the cuts, so that we don't charge taxpayers as much money. I don't know. I mean, I, some of these, I certainly don't support. Some, I maybe don't know enough information, such as on the new design charette, to say exactly how much could be cut from there. It sounds like there is money. They could be cut without severely impacting the project. Maybe the same with the pedestrian safety infrastructure improvements, or maybe not. I just, again, I support council member Clay's concern that there's not enough detailed information in the budget to be able to make the decisions that we have to make at this council.
I'm going to suggest a method that perhaps we can come to a conclusion, come to a decision on this. And that's maybe to take a series of straw votes on some of the budget reconciliation items. My understanding from everybody who spoke and has supported the local supplement to the state tax credit, so I'm assuming that's on everybody's reconciliation list. I, what I would propose is that we do a series of straw votes on the other items and just see where we are.
Can I just get one more bit of information? Does the city manager have any comments on the mayor's proposal for elimination of the police evidence clerk?
I would not be supportive of that. I think this was an issue that I think we've talked about in the past. It, obviously, nothing untoward has happened, but it was an area that was, as is often the case, came up during the accreditation process as something that needed attention. There was, obviously, has been a delay in filling that position, and just quite candidly, I think it was a matter of the fact that we were in a period of transition for most of the fiscal year until Chief Rukucci joined us in February. I think the focus of the police department staff for that, up until the time he joined us, that he was quite frankly on getting the commission positions filled, getting more officers out on the street, and filling this position sort of took a backseat to that effort. Chief Rukucci, as he has with all the positions, I think, is actively recruiting on this. I think there's been ads out on the street now for some time, and it is an area, in my discussions with him, that he thinks warrants further attention.
Carrie.
I would suggest that we use the $35,000 for the evidence clerk and put it into an audit of the evidence management system, so that we know, since it has been cited by the accreditation people as a potential problem area. I haven't been able to receive adequate answers regarding the accounting of the property management. And so I would like to suggest we use that $35,000 for thorough accounting of that area.
What I'm going to do at this point is ask for a straw vote, where I think I want to, I want to go through the additions first, because obviously, if nobody wants to add anything, then we don't have to figure out how we pay for it. So I want to go through the additions first and just see where we are, with the assumption that a majority vote would add, would put something in the budget. So I'm just going to go down one by one. The PDAs or Council Communication Fund, that's $9,500. A number of people who would be in favor of doing that. One, two, three, I'm counting three, which doesn't carry it. The, Bruce took out his request, the request from CASA for the Langley Park Workers' Center for $50,000. That's one that doesn't carry it. And the Manah Food Center, or as council member Siemens has re-described it, funding for, I assume, food for people in need.
There's substance or, substance for helping people move to a higher level of self-sufficiency.
And I'm assuming that, since we all decided to go forward with the grants program, but I'll put grants program in there, the $5,000 for the grants program. Okay, that has four. By my count, the only two things that have a majority of council support are the local supplement to the state tax credit and the grants program, which would be a total of $55,000. I guess the next question, since that's considerably less than $127,500, what the city manager thinks, is that something that could be accommodated through the fund balance or not?
The finance director can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that level of funding would not be problematic. Do you just, Yvonne, do you have any thoughts? She's the one who's got to manage the money.
She's the one who actually has to do it, huh?
I'm a lot more comfortable with that than $127,000. I think you're probably working on the $55,000.
The $55,000, I think, is what we're talking about at this point. Okay. Then if we can accommodate that much smaller amount through the existing fund balance, then I think that's where we are with the supplement to the state tax credit and the grants program.
Given that there's three council members who have gone on record to support the PDAs here in this straw voting session, I'd appreciate the other council members considering this as something that would support their colleagues at least in our council work and adding that in.
Matt, can I have, ask the city manager another question? If you put the 9500 in there, that takes it up to 64500. That strikes me as just kind of stretching the boundaries of being able to take out of the fund balance.
You know, it's obviously, it's a judgment call. I think, as Ms. Brooks said, I'm not trying to dodge the question. I don't know that another, if the council wants to do it, that another $9,500 is going to bust the bank. I think if the council wants to fund that and there's a concern, you could do some minor adjustments to the other items that were included on the email and take it from there. I think that's really a council policy decision.
Two comments. One is, if there's only three council members who are interested in it, then the $9,500 is allowing for seven council members. So if only three are interested in it, then really the $9,500 won't be necessary. The other thing I'd say is that the new design charette of $100,000, given our recent experience of being able to fund it at $90,000, the, that would be the place that I think we could take it from, so that we don't further stretch the undesignated fund.
Let me just remind the council that this is for fiscal '08. Most of '08 is after the fall elections, so I don't think we can say that only three council members want it, because we don't know what any future elected members of the council might want after November. I would be willing to do a yes vote for the other council communication and maybe drop the design charette by $10,000 to compensate. Is that workable? So where, is everybody okay with that? All right. So what we have at this point is we've got the council communication devices, can I call it that, the local supplement to the state tax credit and the grants program. That has a total of 64500. We are going to drop the design charette to nine thou, $90,000, excuse me, $90,000. And the remaining 54500 can be accommodated within the fund balance. Are, is the city manager and the finance director comfortable with that? Okay. All right. Having come to that conclusion, is there anything else anyone would like to add? Terry.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Porter. Just looking back at the recreation department, the discussion we had of scholarships there and the difficulty that people find in signing up for scholarships because of the embarrassment of having to go through detailed financial information and providing income tax returns, someone made a suggestion to me that it might be easier and just as safe, but more palatable to people, to provide scholarships to those children who qualify for the free lunch program in school, because the county does vet those applicants.
Maybe we can ask the city manager and the recreation director to look into that.
I appreciate it.
I would ask that the Public Works Department determine whether any additional trash receptacles are needed, particularly in those heavily trafficked areas along New Hampshire, but also other places in town. It seems like we have a litter problem up and down the corridor that may or may not be remedied by additional cans, but it seems to be working in other parts of the region. That, of course, would require additional pickups, which, you know, might have additional financial obligation. But I would, I'd like to see if there is support for that on the part of the Darrell's group, and if so, a recommendation about how much it might cost for additional receptacle.
So it makes a good point, one that I've noticed we are having trouble with in the Old Town area, which is, on the weekends, the trash receptacles are filled up on Saturday and Sunday, and by Monday morning, when they're emptied, they're really overflowing. So I would almost think that facilitating a cleaner environment and making it easier for our public works staff to collect the garbage would be in our best interests. And I would like to see what Darrell would recommend in the Old Town area.
Anything else? All right. Since we have finished this evening, we, you all don't have to come back for a budget work session on Thursday. And this is a notice also to the public that there will not be a city council budget work session on Thursday. We will take up the final passage of the budget, first reading the final passage of the budget on June 4th. And then the second reading, we're assuming that's the week after that. All right, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.